I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate everybody calling in. We have just one council member that's not going to be here tonight, and that's Lauren Maker. I could have a motion to excuse Lauren.
So moved, Mylan Wallen.
Thanks, Mylan.
Second, Shannon.
Thanks, Shannon. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Lauren Maker from this council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Go through the roll call, each one of them specifically.
Do you want me to do that?
Make sure each council member says they're here.
Okay.
By name, you say the name and make them say you're here.
Okay, what we'll do on this approval of the agenda, I'll call your name and you say whether you approve or not after we have the...
No.
Just for the roll call, make sure we're all here.
Why her? Okay. We'll go through the roll call. Mylan Wallen. Mylan Wallen, if you say here.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mayor, what was that again?
We're just doing the roll call by name.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, here.
Councilman Shannon Middleton. Thank you, Shannon. Andy Holm.
Here.
Andy just said here.
That's Andy, okay. Filberto Monteveros, are you here?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Jane and Julie.
Jane Roberts.
I'm here, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening. And the last, Julie Buck, are you here?
Good evening, I'm also here.
Okay, so all councilmen answer by roll call, with the exception of Lauren, who's been excused. The next item is adoption of the agenda, and with that, we'll need a motion, and just give your name before you give a motion to adopt the agenda and the consent agenda and to second, so we know who you are. Do we have a motion?
This is Shannon, so moved.
Thank you, Shannon.
This is Andy, I second that.
Thank you. We have a... It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and the consent agenda for the regular council meeting of April 20th, 2020. All in favor by name? Say aye.
We don't need their names.
Okay, just give your response.
Aye.
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 That's good. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the department reports, and Reggie Martassier, our police chief, is here to give that report. Reggie?
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I've got a brief report of what's been kind of going on here in Goldendale for the last two weeks. Our criminal cases are still remaining extremely low, which I'm very happy to report tonight. We have seen an increase over the last weekend in some family disputes, which includes two domestic violences that we had that also included alcohol in both of the domestic violences. Also, what we're dealing with recently, over this weekend, is some juvenile runaways. So we're definitely starting to see some people who have been cooped up in their houses a little bit, we're starting to see some tempers starting to flare a little bit, and some of the children are even starting to maybe wanting to get out. So we're definitely dealing with those type of situations. But again, our criminal cases have been extremely low. We've seen good compliance in town with social distancing. We've been doing a lot of education, meantime that we see, or we get a report of a problem with social distancing, we've been doing education, and we've just had great compliance, great attitudes from our citizens. It's just gone extremely well. I'd really like to thank our businesses for their compliance and how well they've been working with the police department during these unprecedented times. So, Mayor, with that, that's all I have for tonight.
Good report, Reggie, thank you. Any questions for Reggie from the council? If not, we'll go to council business. The first item of business is the agreement with WAGAP for the food bank. Larry?
As we discussed at the last meeting, at the last council meeting, there was some talk about the Washington Gorge Action Program Agreement, and there was an additional discussion that we might want to increase that amount, and we had talked, early on in the meeting, we had talked about changing the amount from $5,000 to $7,000, or to $10,000, in light of the new COVID stay-at-home policies and people losing their jobs and things like that. They need food, and the demand for food is much greater these days, according to the Washington Gorge Action people at the food bank. So we had earlier in the 2020 budget decided that we would give $5,000 towards that effort, and since the COVID virus has come to Goldendale and to this nation, we've had a lot more need, and so the discussion was, again, to increase it to $10,000. And then there was additional discussion about the efforts being made at the Goldendale Grange for some distribution of some food there as well, and one of the council members suggested that maybe we should look at also funding that program. So the direction we felt we received at that meeting, which was the last council meeting on the 6th of April, was to increase the Washington Gorge Action Program support from $5,000 to $7,500, and then on the agreement with the Goldendale Grange, it was suggested that we participate with them to put $2,500 towards the Care Package Project, utilizing the Grange parking lot and the Grange building for handling that food. So I went, I touched on both of the agreements, but at this point in time, it would be open for a discussion, Mayor, if that conforms with their direction and if they want to pursue those efforts. So both of, in your paperwork that we handed out, we indicated the funds would only be used for Goldendale food, and that's in both statements of work.
Very good. We'll go through these one by one, but if you have comments or questions, please speak up at this time. If not, do we have a motion to accept the agreement with WAGAP for $7,500?
Phil. I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept that agreement with WAGAP, because that also is that Golden Dale Grange, are they separate?
Is the Goldendale Grange one separate, or can they do it separate?
Separate, I think I'd rather do it separate.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion to forward with WAGAP.
Thank you, Phil.
I'll second that, Mylan.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the Mayor to execute an agreement for services with Washington Gorge Action Programs to provide food bank services in the amount of $7,500. All in favor by name?
Shannon, aye.
Andy, aye.
Mylan, aye.
Jane, aye.
Who else?
Julie, aye.
Thank you, Julie.
Phil, aye.
So the motion passes, and the grant for WAGAP is adopted. So we'll go into the next one, since Larry has presented them both. This has to do with the motion to accept the agreement with Goldendale Grange. Do we have a proposal?
This is Phil, utterly in support of the fair conditions, now I'm likely pushing to move forward with that.
Do we have a second?
This is Andy, I second that.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded by council members that the Mayor is authorized to execute an agreement with the Goldendale Grange in amount in support of the Care Package Project in the amount of $2,500. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good, thank you. The next item, I'm going to ask Councilman Mylan Wallen to present. This is the request for participation in the cost of the Reader Board sign on Main Street.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, this is, we've been talking about this for some time, and I think it's in your packet, but I can go through it real quickly. The Reader Board sign will cost $7,200 and is sized by eight feet. Am I getting a feedback here?
Sounds like it.
Am I coming through okay?
Yes, fine, you're fine.
Okay. Anyway, $7,200, and it's eight feet by 22 inches, and the chamber has, we've got $2,500 in private donations, and the board of commissioners would put in $4,000, and with the city would be $1,000. And the idea of the Reader Board sign would be used for local business, update on emergency for our city and county, and then local people could put in personal messages like happy birthday, happy anniversary, and so on, and the chamber would operate it, would own it and operate it, and the FUD would install it, and Precision Electric would hook it up.
Does the council have any questions?
Any more questions on that?
If not, do we have a motion to accept?
I move to authorize participation for the installation of the Reader Board sign in the amount of $1,000. This is Shannon.
This is Andy, I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize participation for the installation of the Reader Board sign in the amount of $1,000. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. That concludes our council business. The next item on the agenda will be the report of officers and city administrator. And we're going to get the Mary Bellamy.
You missed one.
There's code.
Oh, that's right, number four, I'm sorry. Phil, I didn't do that on purpose. This has to do with code enforcement activities due to the emergency declaration that has been given. Do we have... I think Larry's going to introduce this, and we'll go from there.
Okay, so Phil had some communication with the Mayor and I regarding some concerns he had about enforcement of code enforcement during this coronavirus emergency proclamation. And Phil, that's just an introduction, maybe you want to add what you wanted to say and explain a little further what your concerns are.
Sorry, I don't know if you cut off or if it stopped.
Okay, I was kind of cut off, but I just was saying that you had written, the Mayor and I had some concerns about code enforcement during the emergency proclamation period, and I was just introducing that and turning it over to you to maybe explain to...
Okay, so yeah, so my concern was, since the whole situation with COVID-19, if I were, people essentially stressed out, and working on their, on a daily basis, with the county in touch, and one of the things I know last week, many of you had seen was talk about code enforcement around the neighborhoods, and it seemed like the stress level had up. And obviously, people are a little, dealing with stressful situations in their homes right now, whether the questions about earning wages, going back to work, if at home, watching the kids, and the two items, WAGAP and the Grange, how am I going to feed the kids? And on top of that, the Department of Health issued a request that people refrain from burning. Of course, this is voluntary, and it's not a burn ban, but asking for people to refrain from burning because, one, limited resources, and, two, the health conditions of people that may already have breathing problems. But that request for burning, a lot of people care of their yards that way. So my concern was, with added, with new code enforcing going around the neighborhoods, you know, doing their job as they should, taking people's properties for keenness and whatnot, overgrown brush or grass, or anything like that, I was thinking that it would be a likely act to maybe minimize or suspend some of those items for the time being, as to not create more stress and undue stress on people. Hopefully, they're home, they can take care of their yards, hopefully, they know fire season's coming up again, maybe we can somehow reach that way. But I know some people, if they're a renter, the ladder doesn't go to the renter, the ladder goes to the landlord, which may have unwanted response from the landlord as a result of that, which creates more stress on people. So I think maybe this is something that the city might be able to do to suspend some of that services, hold back a little bit on the code enforcement, and just kind of help our community out a little bit. But I'm not sure how much we want to hold back if anything becomes the mayor and Mary agrees with that.
Thank you, Phil. Part of the response, we met with Jeff Railey to discuss the letter you'd sent us, and the first one was that the code enforcement is strictly on health, sanitation, and structural structures, for the soundest of structures. There's not any checking whatsoever on grass, that has been suspended, I think it probably just wasn't announced. But they're not aggressively enforcing the tall grass and weeds portion of the code at this time, and Justin and Jeff have been working on 10 of the most complicated code enforcement actions, which may require more extensive process, particularly going before the Citizens Council, but of those, three of the 10 have already complied with the voluntary compliance, and four of those remaining seven have since cleaned up, since once legal action had begun. So there's only three homes that are facing any kind of difficulty to get those violations cleared up.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I guess maybe if we can announce that, and just, like I said, how to reduce some of that stress that people have, I think, right now, just about anything that looks negative creates a lot of commotion, even if it's not, and I guess it's the perception of the receiver, you know, but if we can communicate that now, but still ask people, you know, to please prepare for fire season, to, you know, help us make Goldendale beautiful, but realize that maybe those actions are holding back.
We can do that, Phil, and with Roger being a part of the discussion tonight, I'm sure it'll be in his article, and we'll be able to let people know about the grass suspension of that particular ordinance. And the reason that's the only one we want to suspend or lighten is because the council has chosen that maintenance of our homes and our streets and our yards is a priority for the council, and that's why we're trying to do that. But in this instance, it's very rare and unusual, the only things that our city code enforcement officer will be checking on is health, sanitation, and structural violations, and we still have some of those, and he's very conscientious about that, but he's not in any way checking on the grass. Thank you. And if Roger is listening, I'm hoping we get that part in the...
Absolutely.
That we will have in the paper. And I know we mentioned it on the radio, and we'll probably do that again with Julian whenever he comes to interview us. Are there other comments or questions from the council on any of this?
Yeah, this is Shannon. We got to remember too, though, that this is a two-way street, and you have a lot of neighbors who live by these people, who probably have put in multiple complaints over it, and if nothing's being done, that's also going to cause frustration.
To some extent, that's a damned if you do and damned if you don't, but at the same time, some of the complaints that this was generated by about grass, where people have had sanitation issues of trash piled up behind their house or around their house, things of that nature that we do have to act on, but for the grass, that's done until this is all over. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, hi, this is Jane. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for clarifying all that, and thank you, Phil, for bringing this up. I know as someone who's been in and out of sort of the community Facebook pages over the last couple of weeks, I've noticed a lot of negativity coming towards the city from people, and I mean, I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that people are home, that people have a lot of time on their hands, and that people are, as Phil mentioned, really stressed out, and it's really easy to blow off steam on Facebook comment threads, but I really appreciate your response, Mayor, and I think, I think that people will be glad to hear that from the city, because those types of places that you mentioned that have issues with sanitation and general health, I mean, everyone being so conscious of their health and their family's health right now, I think hearing that will hopefully put some folks' minds at ease. So thank you for, thank you, Phil, for bringing it up, and thank you, Mayor, for taking this time to clarify for us and for the community at large.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments or questions? If there's no further discussion, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. This has to do with the report of officers and city administrator, and Larry Bellamy, our city administrator, will begin.
Okay, I just want to report, we actually were, been at this for quite a long time, but some of you will remember that we did have an agreement to sell a piece of property at the corner of Clickatad and Railroad to the Nazarene Church. This actually was all, started all the way back in about January, February of 2019, and that transaction has finally closed, and the money is transferred hands, and it is now in the ownership of the Nazarene Church.
Very good.
So that was quite a complicated process, but a land use nightmare, but we completed all the steps and were able to make that happen. The other thing I've been working on amongst the regular day-to-day duties, but the airport project is in the full, fully engulfed, so to speak, in the environmental process, and we're working closely with the consultant to get through those environmental issues and begin the processes of the CEPA condition, CEPA checklist. That submission is going to go to the county either by May 1st, which is maybe a little on the quick side, but for sure by June, about the 1st of June, for sure, we'll have the environmental work out for comment, and the environmental checklist will be prepared and hopefully moving forward on that project. And then we've had some questions about truck rations of late that we're researching, and we'll probably have a recommendation coming out of the Traffic Safety Committee here pretty soon. So that's about it for me.
Thank you, Larry. Does any of the city councilmen have something they would like to bring to the attention of the council? Just give your name and what you'd like to report.
Well, yeah, thanks, Phil. Mayor, this is Mylan. I just want to thank the council for approving the $1,000 for the Reader Board sign. I really feel that the way things are going, that this will be just a little bit of a bright spot for the city of Goldendale, for people who will go down and read the message and see what the time is, and also what the temperature, and that's one thing that's included in the Reader Board sign, a sensor for where people will be able to see what the temperature is at all the time. So anyway, I want to thank that. And then one other quick thing, Larry, then, the phone conference, it's kind of hard to hear everything, maybe it's me, but then, I assume we don't need another airport meeting?
We probably, I am not sure, we may need one before we go to full application mode on the environmental checklist, so stay tuned.
Okay, okay. Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mylan. Anyone else with a report that they would like to bring up?
This is Shannon, I just have a question. Is there any way that everybody could be mic'd up? Because I'm with Mylan, it's very difficult to hear anybody that's not on a mic.
We only have two.
What you're talking about?
Does louder help?
Hello, yes, louder does help.
Duh.
Okay. Well, we'll try to speak up a little bit louder. It's tough to meet the six-foot separation requirement at the same time being, and then huddle around the microphones, since we only have two, but we'll try to speak loudly. I'll encourage everyone to speak loudly, and hopefully that will help a little bit.
And we're all respecting the six-foot distancing around this table. It's important to do. Anybody else? Thank you, Shannon.
This is Phil.
Yes, Phil.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. First, thank you, everybody, for supporting WAGAP and the Goldendale Grange. They've been doing a fabulous job. I carry my day job, I've been working with both of those roads, and what they're doing is such an extreme, along with the grocery stores, you know, providing the service that everybody needs, curbside service, as soon as there was a mention of a need, our pharmacy and grocery store stepped up and covered that. The other thing, I just want to remind everybody, fire season is coming up. Fire chief's not here, he's still out on the hunt of fire, that, whatever. That's starting to be a thing, and I know we're easing up on the lawns and everything else like that, and I just talked about easing up on that, but I think it needs to be a reminder to the community to... But I think it needs to be a reminder to the community to keep that in mind. It makes it a little difficult for the fire department not having regular meetings because of the distancing, trying to do the virtual meetings as well, keeping everything up to date, to have everybody trained and everything. We just need the community to help out with that. And thank you, everybody, for being so open and understanding. And I think sometimes we forget that everybody in public service is trying to do the best they can with what we got and with the current situation. I just want to thank everybody for being patient and everybody doing our part, even though sometimes we have talent issues. But I think that's a lot better. We're all here. We're all helping.
Exactly right. Anything further, Phil?
That's all I got.
Thanks so much. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Yes, this is Andy. I was approached this last week by the owner of the laundry mats. He stated that the dog pound was using their laundry mats to clean the bedding and stuff. And there was a lot of complaints on Facebook. And he's pointed me to bring up why certain cities have a wash facility and have the dog pound. I know that we have a contact with, I think it's dogs in the garbage heap. Is there any way we can get a washing machine out there for them so they can do it there versus using the public laundry mats?
Andy, this is Larry. I can certainly look into that option. At the moment, I would be a little bit concerned about a washing machine out at the animal control shelter because of being able to make sure there is heat enough so it didn't freeze up in the wintertime. But let me take a look and talk with the operations building out there at the wastewater treatment plant and also take a look at the city shop and see if there's an opportunity there where something could be hooked up as well. The city shop might be a better location because, of course, the chance of it freezing would be relatively low. And so it might be a better...
Yeah, no, I just, I had concerns from, I saw on social media and the owner, they were just really concerned. They were doing that, you know, with the, out the, just the mess that the animals make and then going to a public one. And someone had to rewash their clothes. They were a little bit money to have to wash their clothes. And they didn't have money to rewash their clothes because they were all disgusting from that. So I just feel that we really need to try to find a way to fix that issue.
It's a really valid need. We certainly want to get that solved. Thanks, Andy. Anyone else?
This is Julie.
Yes, Julie.
Yeah, fair. I would just like to thank Mylan and the Chamber of Commerce for their work on getting the signs for it put up. I think that's going to be a real nice welcome to the community, especially with the new county building going right around the corner. So I think, again, when I first moved here, that was an eye tour that I saw and wondered why it wasn't working or how long it hasn't been working. So I'm excited to see that come in, especially like with the new county building around the corner, I think, in our own dedication.
This is Mylan. Thank you, Julie.
And Julie, you know, our world has kind of been turned upside down with this virus. And going back to something that used to be good will still be good. And I think that'll lift people's spirits a bit as well. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, on the mayor's side, primarily, I just want each of us to do our best to encourage people, to help them to understand that the six-foot distancing is an important part of controlling this virus and eliminating it. And the same with washing our hands. These things need to be done. They're serious. And they affect other people's health if you're not doing it yourself. And it can be, end up with a very sad story. So I hope we can work together to let people understand that we are following and trying our best to help everybody else to do the same so we protect everyone in our community. Thank you. The next item is public comments. And after public comments, we'll have a workshop regarding a draft update of the city's critical areas ordinance. And there's, you have materials attached to the packet. But Justin Lee will be doing that. But first, anyone here for public comment? I don't believe so.
Hi, this is Lene Johnson from the Care Package Project at the Grange. I just want to really thank you for your support with this project. Each one of you, appreciate that. And if there's anyone who needs anything in particular, we try to cater to that. And if you know of a shut-in or someone that isn't able to get out, we will deliver to those people. So we've been doing a lot of deliveries to also the extended areas such as Roosevelt and Wishram. And we're doing the hospital, plenty of nurses there. So if you know of anybody, please let us know.
Excellent. We certainly will. Anyone else for public comment? Thank you.
Larry, are we going to close the meeting and then do the workshop?
We're going to move now from public comments to the workshop that will be conducted by Justin Lee. And I'll turn this over to Justin. Are you there, Justin?
I'm going to try it.
Justin? Say it again, Mayor.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Is that you, Justin?
Yeah, this is Justin.
Okay, we're ready for you.
Okay. Can you still hear me? Sorry, my phone's being weird.
I can hear you.
Okay, all right. So everyone has in their packet the following documents. There is a cover memorandum that outlines the changes, the proposed changes that I've made to our critical area ordinance, which really includes two parts of our, of the GMC, of the Golden Ousmane Code. It makes primarily the section on critical areas and then also part of our building code as it relates, you know, to those things. So I sent this out to the council a week ago so that they would have a full week to review. And then this was included in the public packet when it went out the end of last week. So rather than just basically regurgitate everything that is in the cover memo and in the track changes of the GMC, what I'd like to kind of do is give you an overview of where this exists in the process of adopting the ordinance. And then I just kind of open it up to questions as they come. So as part of adopting any ordinance, and this is no different, we are required by Rock to have a public participation program. And, you know, in this COVID-19 situation, that definitely makes that difficult. The Department of Commerce, neither the Department of Commerce nor the state is waiving any of those public participation requirements. So we just kind of have to make do. This is not how any of us would like to hold these meetings or a workshop like this. But we've got to do what we can. So we're going to have this workshop. It's really just an opportunity for the public or for council members or whomever, other stakeholders, to come to, the council will come to me with questions, comments, concerns, things they'd like to see different, stuff like that. And then from there, the next step is that we do a, what's called a non-project CEPA. Know it's, everything that, all the proposals will go to the Department of Ecology will be a comment period for the public. And then once we close out of that comment period, basically, we would have a first and a secondary ordinance, and that would be adopted. And of course, during that, during that time, at the request of stakeholders or the council, we can add additional workshops. We can also have ordinance committees as well. There's no right way to do it. It's really up to what people would like to see, of course. You know, if we have certain voices that are really requesting specific changes, that we don't necessarily have to tie up a council meeting workshop going over line by line the changes. An ordinance committee would be better suited for something like that, which ordinance committee is also a public meeting, but it's just a little more focused. So we have an option that we can talk about if people would really like to kind of dive into certain changes. But basically, we are required by the Urban Act to update our critical area ordinance. We have a deadline of the end of June to adopt this. It can get extended if we need because of, you know, the current situation. We're not seemingly allowed to adopt it yet. But I would still like to do everything that we can to basically have it be ready to be adopted as soon as we are able to. Once it's adopted, we'll be able to apply for different types of money from the Department of Commerce, whether it's like for our parks or for these elements block for activities. So this is kind of the first step to trying to receive some state and federal money that we can use for different projects in the city. And so the way that this update worked was that last, like two years ago, we got a grant from Commerce to hire a consulting firm to fill out what Commerce calls the critical area checklist. This is basically a guide to figure out what exactly you need to change in your critical area work. And so we have this consulting company called Burger AVAM. They're now called WSC. They completed it. So we had a really reputable, skilled consulting company fill out the checklist for us and basically handed us a guide on what we needed to do to get our CAO in line with state and federal requirements. And so for the most part, all the updates come from that document and are really designed to create more regulatory consistency, more transparency, more scientific back processes, and then more, what do you call it, policies that align with rules that have been made by other state-level agencies, like the Department of Ecology and the Department of Division of Wildlife. So that is kind of the overall process and kind of where things stand. So does anybody have any questions about that process, about the work that I did, about the memorandum, or about the, any specifics of the revision?
Counsel, are there any questions to Justin? Justin, I don't believe there's any comments coming.
Okay, that's good. And there will be more opportunity to bring up questions. So it's not like, not like you're missing out or, you know, you lose opportunity here. So this is just kind of the first public part of this process, so. But if there's something, then we can, like I said, we're going to move on if this is the CEPA process. And we'll publish notes in the paper. And that note is all the relevant stakeholders and kind of take it from there.
Hello?
Does somebody have a comment?
Shouldn't be.
Did we lose Justin?
What's that?
Oh, thought we lost you.
No, I'm here. I heard some weird noises up on the shirt. No, okay, well, doesn't sound like anyone's got anything.
And we all have redline copies of your work. So that'll be helpful for everybody to see the changes. If they have any questions, it's in the packet that you've already received and has gone out to the public. Are there any other items you wanted to bring up, Justin? If not, if not, we'll go ahead and close the meeting. Everyone here is looking.
Justin, didn't you have more to say?
No, I've been talking about this for hours, but more to hack out everybody, but...
Okay. Well, I thank you for that.
And as usual, you did a great job, Justin. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
In a moment, we'll need a motion to close the meeting. But we're all looking forward to seeing your smiling faces around this table soon. And the sooner the better. Do we have a motion to close the meeting?
Was that you, Shannon?
Yes, it was, Shannon.
Okay. Second?
This is Andy. I'm the second, Pat.
Thank you, Andy. It's been moved and seconded to close the city council meeting for April 20th, 2020. Our next meeting of the council will be May 4th, 2020. And depending on conditions, it may continue to be a virtual meeting. Thanks, everyone. Do we have a vote? We need a vote.
Oh, we needed a vote. Okay, goodbye.
Goodbye. You got it.